Hello, everyone. This is the Ralph Rock Theater. Hello, my name is Chip Grant. And we've been doing these forums with city council at large and mayors and different city council members for over 15 years. We're very glad to offer this forum. And this forum kind of happened in a different way. It's called the one-on-one forum. And the main reason why we do a one-on-one forum is that sometimes you go to these larger forums and they make you put up these things, yes or no, and kind of go all this thing and they have some little fancy reporter and all that other stuff. Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. This is what we're doing. We're doing old school today. We're taking smaller groups of city councillors running for at-large and letting them have time each 10 minutes to explain who they are to the community. We're also videotaping this. We're gonna put it on Facebook and also on X and all these other different platforms. So you can hear one-on-one who these candidates are. So this, I'm adding something which I didn't tell them. So each candidate's gonna have 10 minutes to talk. All right? 10 minutes, 10 minutes, 10 minutes and 10 minutes.
You said 20.
Huh? Oh, 45. And then they're gonna take like 10 minutes of questions from the audience, okay? And unscripted, I want to hear your voices. All right? But one thing we're gonna do added, and I didn't tell them all this, is that at the end of their speech, whatever they say, they get to ask everybody candidate on here, they have one question that can have all of them answer. So right now, you've got to think of a question that you want all of them to answer, think of a question all of them can answer, think about a question all of them can answer. And you know what? You can stump them. If you, "I don't care," you can do whatever you want. You can make us up legitimate answer, "I don't care."
We can ask an audience question?
No, we can't.
Each other.
One question for each other.
Is that fun, y'all?
Yeah.
All right, we'll keep it fun here, all right? So I do, I'm gonna have some water come out in 10 minutes. We have some fried chicken wings and all that. So be ready to get up, walk around, get some food, all that other stuff, sodas and all that. So we're just gonna start it off like this. So I hope you guys like the rules of engagement. Right? Does this sound like a good time?
Yeah.
All right? And it's gonna be videotaped and also we have several different people videoing for their own sessions. But before we start, we'd just like to hear who's in the room. So just say who you are right there. Right there, we know who you are. Go ahead.
I'm Russell Flint, founder and executive director for the Marcus Anthony Hall Educational Institute.
Thank you.
I'm Chinchi DeGeorge. I've been on different campaigns. I'm currently assisting Julianne here.
I'm Angelo Williams Mitchell, Rockford resident, Boston Drives Coalition.
Just jump right up the floor.
Of Connie Forbes Garrison Trotter Association, and a bunch of whole other nonprofits in the area.
I'm Dominic. I'm at S.A.L. as Deputy Campaign Manager.
Good.
I'm John Benio. I advise policy for Martin.
Good.
Clinton Brayton, Boston State man, running candidate for at-large.
Felix Cacillo, East Boston resident and supporter of Frank Baker.
She McCormick, ex-employee of Frank Baker, who was the lead of the...
Right up.
Isaac Zende, Dorchester native, here supporting Frank Baker.
Please, right here, over here in the corner.
Andrew Stewart, Ole Miss, Massachusetts, supporter of Frank Baker, media production.
Me? Yep.
Yes.
Benjamin Kivod, man. Full of Howard, Howard, and then who knows?
All right, good, good, good. Thank you. Right over here.
Hi, Sony, Madison Park resident. I'm here getting my information.
Go for it. Let's go right, right, right.
I'm with PS, Roxbury Community College alumni, and I'm here in support of Frank Baker.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Stewart, constituent services for Lower Rocksperry District 7.
I'm Gerald Dorte Shawman, marketing, Madison Park resident, just here to really get a feel for what they can offer to, you know, benefit the city as a whole.
Cheryl Strata, former owner of Sole Restaurant Network with DPS.
Cheryl, thank for creating this space, Cheryl. Your body is Santa Dolan here. I still sell it right here.
Hi, Nancy Norman, born in Roxbury, Dorchester resident.
Please.
Bill Singleton, president of United Neighbors of Lower Rocksperry. He's been around for about 50 years and I'm just holding on and pushing forward. I'm also a ward nine comedian and I'm a businessman in the community and a filmmaker. So depending on which hat I put on, you can talk through it here. But that's it and I love everyone here and the vibe is great.
Please, next.
Hi, I'm Neil Horahan. I'm retired and I'm here to listen. Thanks.
Hey, hey, it's best.
I'm Wawa Bell, co-founder and Newbin Square Foundation and a candidate for District 7.
All right. Thank you.
Katrina Conrad, construction workforce professional, associated with Work 2 and Conrad Bills, resident of Chinatown. Thrilled to be here. Thank you.
Damon Kaiser, Roxbury resident, professional listener.
Hi, this is Tina Wright, Roxbury resident, Madison Park alumni, third generation of Anubian Ocean Incorporated, RCC adjunct professor in the past, and here to listen.
Steven Wilson, Greater Minds Advisory Board.
Donald Osgood, pastor of the city and love of the community.
Robert Dankowski, resident of Dorchester, City of Boston employee, very involved in politics. Pay good attention what's going on here in the city of Boston as a resident, as a homeowner, as a taxpayer. So it's very important, I think, having those younger kids here speaking to the candidates says for itself. That's very, very important, especially considering I've been voting ever since legally at the age of 18 to vote, never missed any election vote.
Super voter, boy.
Super voter, right there.
My name is Brennan. I'm a Boston resident, Dorchester born and bred. I'm passionate about my city. I'm concerned about what's going on. I'm here to support two of my friends up there tonight, Will and Frank, and to learn about what the other candidates have to say as well. I think this city is a great place and it's, it's home.
He stole part of my line. I'm here to support Will and Frank. I'm the founder of the People's Academy Trade Apprenticeship Program.
Say your name again.
T. Michael Thomas.
Anybody else? There's a couple more.
I'm Rich Future, Roxbury, born, raised, bred. I love Roxbury. That's it.
Hey, everybody. My name is Brandon Ransom. I'm a father and I've got my two wonderful boys back here. We run a cool web design, which is the Greatest Minds website.
I share my business too.
You have your business. Give me a second. A moment to second. I'm also here representing the NAACP's Health Committee as well as the Urban League, I'm the inter-president of the Urban League Eastern Massachusetts Young Professional Network.
Okay. Last one?
Nita, Nita Holder, community advocate and organizer, here to listen to what the candidates have to offer so I can bring it back to the community.
Siobhan Haywood, owner and founder of Lime Life Juices, resident of High Park, just here to listen.
This one over here, he's had his luck.
I'm Dave Richardson.
There's three more.
All right, here, see that one?
Okay. Listen, I'm Dave Richardson. I'm here on behalf of the People's Academy, here to support Frank. Frank Baker.
Okay, Ethan.
Have your sons introduce themselves.
You guys wanna go? Go ahead.
She should go first. I don't want her.
Wait, we did the business together.
You got it. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Introduce it, introduce it.
We do, we did Fit Play.
We have children.
First, start with, start with your name.
My name is Pierce and this is Harrison.
I can say my own.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Peace out, peace.
Okay.
My name is Pierce.
And my name is Harrison.
And we created Fit Play and soon Morris Minor. And Fit Play is basically a game where we use augmented reality to do things like physical therapy and physical therapies and do games that, and do other games that actually exercise people either when, even when you can't go outside.
Good stuff.
I'm pretty thing, everybody. My name is Heather Cook. I'm a lifelong resident by way of the South End. I'm a national activist and organizer, among other things, founder of South End Brunch Club along with Donald here in the Melking Brunches. Thank you.
The fourth side of why we're doing this again is that this is our way to get our community members to have one-on-one discussions with people here that are running for at-large. And what happened to this one is that this one particularly have been the people that were the challengers. So we just said, well, we call it the challengers, okay? So today, what we're gonna do is that we're gonna have everybody have 10 minutes just to introduce themselves and then after that, they get to ask one question for each of them to answer and then they'll take a few minutes of questions and answers from the audience, all right? Unscripted. So I'm very proud to have everybody here. I thank you for coming and we're videotaping this and we're gonna put it on YouTube and Facebook tomorrow to blast all over for people that cannot come here. So before we go on, I'd like everyone just to say who they are for 30 seconds for the video and just say who we are, starting with Will and going all right down for the video. That's who you are and why you're running for office for 30 seconds quickly, then we'll go deeper.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Will Anoha. I am a candidate for city council at large. I run for Boston City Council because I really believe that I have what it takes to help improve our city and improve the lives of residents in the city of Boston. And I hope to earn your vote tonight, even if you are here voting for somebody else or you're here with someone else. I hope at the end of this, you will see that I am a candidate that is worthy of your vote and is going to work for you. Thank you very much.
Wait, next. No, no, we're doing 30 seconds.
Sorry. I'm all over the place. How you all doing? My name is Marvin Mathelier. I'm running for Boston City Council at-large. You're gonna learn more about me this evening and hopefully, just as Will said, that by the end of this evening, you're gonna say, hey, this is the guy I want to go ahead and vote for. You're gonna learn more about me. I'm not just, you know, a father. I'm also a Marine. I'm a small business owner. I've done a lot of work with our veterans as well too. So I look forward to this conversation, to the one-on-ones we're gonna have here. We're gonna look forward to some of the fun banter as well. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexandra Valdez. I'm a mom. I'm a proud Australian and I've been serving the city for over 10 years. I am running as your Boston City Council at-large. If you would bring my experience, my love and passion to the city council, but also a perspective that's gonna bring and really take into perspective everything from the city. I hope that today you get to learn a little bit about me and what I stand for, but also understand a little bit about why I'm running and my passion for serving the city of Boston. Thank you.
Bring it over, Frank.
Hello, my name's Frank Baker. I was a district city councillor in Dorchester for 12 years and before that I did 25 years in other city departments before that. So I'm bringing experience, common sense, and a voice of independence. I know what city departments do. I know, I know budgets and, you know, I'm able to identify problems and be able to come up with solutions. I'm a lifelong Boston resident. We've been here for generations, one of 13, so I talk a lot because no one ever listened to me, whatever.
That's so funny. Thank you, thank you. Now remember that you do have four candidates to choose from, all right? You could vote for one, you can bullet vote if you want to, but there are four candidates. If you have one made up here, you might have people here to help make up your mind and spread the word, old school style. Okay? So rock, paper, scissors? Who won? All right? All right, rock, paper, scissors over here. Who won? Go ahead. Who won?
He did.
All right, all right, all right, all right.
So what's that mean?
I don't know. All right? Now Frank and you, can you rock, paper, scissors real quick? Go ahead, all right? Ready? Frank, Frank.
All right? Tell me, who do you want to be? What number you want to be?
I'll vote first.
All right, all right. What year you want to be?
I'll vote second.
Okay, all right. How about you?
I'm happy to vote first.
You said what?
Happy to vote third.
Third? Okay, well, sorry.
I guess going forward.
Okay, so I'm gonna get out the way because this is not about me being the moderator and all that. It's about them talking and that's why I wanted to make sure this, okay? So Will, you have 10 minutes. I need, who wants to be timekeeper today? We need a community co... Cheryl, are we timekeeper? Now Cheryl, I know you're good at this. You'll give them, you'll give them an eight-minute warning?
Okay, I will.
All right, so Cheryl's the timekeeper. Give it up for Cheryl Strata. Now, when she says stop, that means stop, Will, all right? Okay.
Be generous to me.
Just one second.
All right. I see the hard people, I see the fire people. Don't get her up here now, all right?
I'll let, I'll tell you when to start. Then do you want a two-minute to go or a three-minute to go?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, all right.
So you can move anywhere. You can go in front, you can sit on the side, you can do every, what you want. I can put, I can put a chair up here, anywhere you want to feel.
All right. So.
Good evening, everybody. As I said, my name is Will Anoha. Let me just help you by name very quickly. If you're in Hawaii, you say aloha, anoaha. If you can't say it, just call me Will. All right? I'm from Boston. I was born and raised right here in the city of Boston. In fact, I grew up in a neighborhood just down the street called Mission Hill. And I grew up in Mission Hill during the 80s, during the Charles Stewart era. So for those of you who are familiar with that time, that's the era that I've come from. And since then, I have served the city of Boston for the last 20 years. And I have served every mayor for Mayor Tom Menino, to Mayor Woo, who I left in 2022. I'm running for Boston City Council, ladies and gentlemen, because I am deeply concerned with where the direction our city is going in. I'm deeply concerned that our city council is failing to address the issues that are impacting you and impacting me daily, from the rising and soaring housing costs to failing schools to massing cats, which has now become mass in every neighborhood really in the city of Boston, or mass in Roxbury Mass and South End Mass and Beacon Hill, Bag Bay, and also public safety. And as much as we as a city are doing better as far as homicides, shootings are still up. We tout Boston being the safest city in America, but that's not totally the truth. You see, I'm running for the Boston City Council because Boston's facing so many crises right now. And as someone who has worked in the administration, I started at, I've worked at every level of the government. I was district infant mayor, Tom Menino, for about eight years before I went to law school. After doing that, I worked at Northeastern until Mayor Marty Walsh brought me back. I've been the housing commissioner in two different capacities for the last 10 years. I finished that in 2022, left him. I was, I was the executive director of my brother's keeper for the city of Boston under the Obama Foundation. And I also created and built the Human Rights Commission for the city of Boston. I'm just telling you these things so you understand who I am and what I do and what, what qualifies me. Having worked for the administration, I can tell you that things that are currently going on right now in the city of Boston are not helping you. The city council currently touts all the good things that they're telling you that they're doing, but I can assure you, they're lying to you, all right? If you're happy with the way how things are, then continue to vote for them. But if you know in your heart that what is currently happening in your city and what's affecting you is not good, then give me a chance. And here's why. My specialty is housing. Did you know, just by the, just by a show of hands, is anybody here in Boston or in this room happy with their housing situation?
Not at that point.
Exactly. I didn't think so. Do you know that as a resident of Boston, you are not supposed to pay more than 30% of your income for your housing? Everybody talks about affordable housing, affordable housing. But here's the problem. That's just part of the issue. The real issue is workforce housing. Because you've gotta be poor to get into affordable housing, you gotta be poor to keep it. And anytime you try to move up, people have to make a decision on, do I stay at where I am and risk my housing or do I move up? That's not the kind of decisions you should be making. Housing is a civil right. Did you know that?
Yeah.
Housing is a human right. Housing is a human right. That means your government is supposed to provide it for you. One of the policies I have is to make sure, in fact, I'll back up a little bit. In 2022, before I left the city of Boston to go to Water, so I'm now a lawyer at Water and Sewag, where we see their health and safety department, we were able, under my staff in my office, to do something called the Analysis of Impediments for the city of Boston. And what it does is it looked at all the things that are impediments to the city of Boston that stand in the way of housing. Do you know I can tell more about you from your zip code than any medical report can tell me about you? Housing is not very sexy on its face, but here's the problem. The effect of education, where you can get your education, the jobs you can get, your transportation, and where you can work. All these issues are in a polygamous relationship. They're married. The city of Boston should be doing far more for you. Instead of our city council to be fighting for these issues, you have people who are ducking meetings. Frank, excuse me. Ed Flane, just last week put out, I don't know if you guys saw it on Facebook, blasted his entire council for ducking meetings. Meanwhile, housing is skyrocketing. They were supposed to discuss that day what happened on the 24th when many Boston residents didn't get paid on the, on July 24th. They were also supposed to address the sidewalk issues and what's currently happening with our traffic in our sidewalks. But guess what? They ducked that meeting. But they're gonna tell you on 11, on August 11, how wonderful they are, how big they're doing, and how everything is going so great, but it doesn't reflect what's happening in the city of Boston. Please understand that we are resource-rich in the city of Boston, but results poor.
Yes.
Boston is the seat of education for the entire United States, but yet our high school kids are graduating and can't read at an eighth grade level. Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Boston is the biomedical hub for the entire United States, but yet we can't fix a man-made issue called mass and cats from an opioid crisis that they created. Everybody kicks the can down the street to the next person. These are the issues that I am wanting for city council to fix for my family and for your families. With the taxes you pay, with what you are going through, this should not be the way it is. Boston can do better. We can do better. And every couple of years, they come to you, they ask you for your vote and just for things to remain the same. As I've been door knocking about the entire city of Boston, here's what's happened. People have referred to the Boston City Council as the clown show. Like, you know, they've called it the clown show. Never in my life have I ever seen our city council referred to as a clown show. That's, that's terrible. A clown's, a clown's belonging to circus. But guess what? They're gambling with your life. They're gambling with your children's lives, with their education, instead of fighting issues that they should really be focusing on. The Boston Policy Institute just the other day blasted the city council. And guess what? For what? Because they have not called anybody from the school department to have any hands on what happened in our schools. This is the Boston Policy Institute blasted them. Meanwhile, they gambling with the lives of our kids. We talked about the prison, the pipeline in the prison, but guess what? When you can't read and your reading levels are in the eighth grade or you can't read at an eighth grade level, you don't have many options. We are building a soccer stadium, a $200 million soccer stadium over at, at White Stadium. That's not for us. That's not for our kids. I'm just telling the truth. If you think I'm lying, Boston has a history of doing this. Look at Carter Playground, right? We built that. It was open to the community. As soon as Northeastern went in there and made a decision, the community doesn't use it anymore. All right? You're not gonna spend $200 million on a stadium and allow our kids to use it. It doesn't happen. That's just not the way it is. I'm not saying White Stadium shouldn't be done over. It should. Our kids deserve it. But that's not a priority we should be facing right now. We've got bigger fish to fry, bigger issues to fry than White Stadium. We should be investing in our trades program because you know what? College isn't for everybody. It really isn't. But we've got kids that got great minds, skills that can do the trades, not to mention people who are incarcerated, who are coming home. This gives them a second chance or not pushing it. That money was supposed to be from Madison Park, but yet, did anybody on the city council push that? Thank you. They didn't. Many of them ducked that meeting as well too. As your city council, I promise you, these things will change under my watch. As your city council, if I'm able to earn your vote, these are the things I'm gonna work for every day to fight for you. As your city council, when I have city council hearings, they're gonna be in the neighborhood. Because you should see who comes to me and who doesn't. They should be able to face you. They should be able to tell you whatever decision they're gonna make to your face. Any council hearing I'm having is happening in the neighborhood where it's taking place. Forget City Hall. Forget City Hall. Here's the thing that's most important that I want you to remember, if not anything else. It's one thing to fight for the community, but it's another thing to fight between brick and mortar in the boardroom. That's where most of the decisions are made. That's where the things that affect everyone's life in here is made. And we don't have warriors in here. We got clouds, according to the city of Boston, who think this is a joke. So this is the reason I'm running for city council. I hope this evening we'll be able to have a more substantive conversation and I'll be able to gain your vote. Thank you very much. I'm Will Anoha and I approve this candidacy.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Will. I want to first thank Chip. Chip's a good friend. I met him in my first term when he was doing constituent service, so he was Mike Ross's, Mike Ross's chief of staff, I think. And I think part of the reason why I'm running for city council, I'm a former district city councillor, I served 12 years after I was laid off from the printing department for 25 years, where I was the head steward, the chief steward. I negotiated all the contracts there and whatnot. So in my first term, what happened and the difference between what happens now and when I first got on is every person on the city council that was a sitting city councillor asked me to either go to lunch or go to dinner with them to get to know them, relationship building. And I think that I can bring that certain, that, that skill back to the city council. When I left, it was literally nobody was talking, nobody was working on issues together. And that's, that hurt us as a city and it hurts us now. I believe in the city of Boston. If you think about it, entire country started here. This is where it all happened. And it didn't happen, it didn't happen by people not working together. So I'm looking to help to stitch the city back together. I know, like I said, I did 25 years in, in city departments, I did 12 years on the city council. And my largest learning curve in my entire life, I never went to college, I went to a trade school, I took printing. And my largest learning curve in my life was when I got on the city council and we And my largest learning curve in my life was when I got on the City Council and we had balanced council meetings. That is the role of the City Council, to, to bring issues into the neighborhoods. And I had council here. My first, my first council hearing was held at the Lila Frederick School, and it was on, um, not halfway houses, but the, the fake halfway houses that are in all our neighborhoods, for lack of a better term. They call them halfway houses, but they're just rooming houses where they're preying on people. I've done those, I've done those things. I think I bring a certain experience. I think I, I think I'll bring common sense, and I'll also bring a voice of independence. As the balanced, as the, the, the part of government that is supposed to provide the balance to the strong mayoral system, and I believe in the strong mayoral system, but right now, there's no balance there. We have, we have people that, that just automatically are either told how to vote, or they vote in line. And again, I'm not looking to go and block anything or block anybody, but the reality is, I wanna go and have the discussions to see if they, to see if what we're talking about, what we're passing is good for the city. I come from a family of love. I live by the golden rule is what I, what I live by. I expect a certain treatment, and if people give me that treatment, they're gonna get the same sort of treatment back. My family was a family of service. My father was in, was in, um, the recovery community and helped loads and loads of people get, get sober through the AA program. I can say that now. He's passed away. And like Reggie said, he, Reggie brought music into our lives, but my oldest brother was blind. And what my mother gave to us, my mother had a fifth grade education, grew up in, grew up in Montreal, extreme poverty. And she was unstable her entire life, never really had a home to call their own. So when she got here and had her first son that was blind, she knew that more than anything, we needed a stable house. And she bought a house near my parent, my, my father's parents, and there was a corner store at the, at the end of the street. And my oldest brother, who was blind, like I said, Reggie's friend, my brother John could play anything. You remember? He's also passed away. My mother bought that house so she could hand him the note, and he could count the fence posters on, on the way down there and hand it to the Seagulls. Mrs. Seagull and say, yeah, Mrs. Seagull, this is what my mom wants, wants today. And my father wasn't always sober, so that bill didn't always get paid. The Seagulls, everybody knows what a cuff is. The Seagulls gave us a cuff back in the day, before there was credit cards, before there was anything to do with, with, you know, credit. The Seagulls did that for us. And my mother, till the day she died, would cry about the Seagulls and, and how good they were to her. Now, with the fifth grade education, my, my mother knew and understood the importance of community. She formed the Little House Health Center, which, which was back in the day, Dorchester was the epicenter for the, the health center movement. People remember that. Guyver Gibson on Columbia Point was the first. I think Napleson Health Center was the second. And my mother's health center was in there someplace. She formed that with women from the neighborhood that were strong women, that knew and, and saw a need, and they spoke to it. And my father and his friends procured the building and did the work on that. That was, that was 100% community-driven. And when that closed, when that closed in the 90s sometime, it was connected onto the county hospital. When that closed, nearly everybody in my life, all my friends, all my contemporaries, had their healthcare at the Little House Health Center. So I come from a family that knows how to give back, and I think Boston right now, more than ever, needs someone that can put the ego away. Again, it all started here. It all started here. We need to get back to, and I think, because it started here, I think, if we show leadership in a municipal level in Boston, and show the rest of the world, especially Washington, what it means like to have real, meaningful conversations. I might not like you or love you, but I'm going to respect you and sit down and have conversations with you so we can, so we can figure out housing, so we can figure about schools. We're talking constantly about Washington when our third graders at 80% are not reading at a grade level. I'm gonna say that again. Our third graders, mostly black and brown kids, are not reading at a third grade level. And when you talk about math, that gets even worse. The future is barreling at us, people. It's coming right at us. AI and our kids are not prepared. I have a proven track record of setting up job training. I actually got the land, I actually got the land help because my friend happened to be the mayor and I was on the City Council, but a valuable program for the Peoples, the Peoples Academy. If I get on the City Council, the Peoples Academy will be built. I also. At the former Boston Globe, the developers came in, they told us how wonderful and great a brand-new shiny building was gonna be. And they said, oh, you're gonna love it. We're gonna go all, we're gonna, it was first gonna be manufacturing, high-tech manufacturing. Then it became all biotech. They told me how great it was gonna be. Said it's not gonna be great unless you're training our kids into those jobs. Based on those conversations and based on those, on those commitments that I got from the developers and from the moneyed people, the moneyed class, I said, you're not coming here unless you're training kids from neighborhoods within district, within district free, and within the entire city of Boston. Right now, Bioversity trains 20 to 30 kids every three months into entry-level jobs in the biotech, biotech industry. That's Bioversity. Look at it. Send your kids there. Send your husbands there. Send your wives there. You don't need to be a kid. You just need to be able to, be able to want to learn and be part of, be part of a team. Um, I also, I also, through my office, formed the New Market Bid, which you see people out here cleaning up New Market Bid. Bids are things, bids are basically tax levies that are, that are, that are applied to the business communities where you can have city-type services without city-type bureaucracy. And the bid also has a, a job training component. The people that are being serviced by the bill. Two minutes. Okay, thank you. The people that are in the, in the yellow vest there, they're all recovering, recovering addicts in different forms of different, different times of their recovery, but those are their starter jobs. And they're gonna be in line to go into the meatpacking industries and all the jobs that we have down there at New Market Square. I think in the, in the schools, we're thinking totally wrong about the way we're, we're, we're going about our education. I believe in, in, in Madison Park. I believe we have to put 700 million into Madison Park. I will support that. But in the meantime, in the meantime, let's get back to the way we used to do it. Dorchester High was electrical. Brighton High was plumbing. South Boston High was, was, was sheet metal. So you can go back to a lower, for, for, I don't know, put a number on it. Is it 5 million where we can build, where we can build one trade here? We can build one trade here. That will allow our high schools to now have kids. I talked to two different kids here today. They're looking to get into the unions. And that's relationships. That's what we don't have on the City Council now. And I'll finish it by saying one thing. The most important thing, role of a City Council and anybody that works in the city, everybody that works in the city, they don't work for the mayor. They don't work for City Council. They work for you. And if they're not returning your calls, if they're not returning your calls, then they are neglectful in their dues. And they need to have hearings so people know what's going on. My name's Grant Baker. I would totally appreciate one of your four votes on September 9th, and please again in November. I love the, I love the opportunity to come back and serve the city of Boston. I love it so much. I love the way I grew up. I love the people. We are rich in people. We might not all be rich, but we're rich in people and we care about each other. Let's start acting that way.
Good feeling, Eric.
Thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. My name is Alexandra Valdez. Um, and I am proudly running to be Boston City Council at large. For all the young people that are still here, anyone, if you have not registered to vote, I do have voter registration forms here. Say a little bit. I went to elections department and I always carry them around with me because it's important to make sure that we're teaching and we're educating about the importance to vote. We come and we have conversations about what it is to be a City Council, but what are we doing collectively to make sure that we're teaching others the importance to do that? What are we doing to teach our young people that when they're able to vote, their voice needs to be heard? So if we're advocating how we're gonna make our city better, then let's make sure that we start carrying these around to educate everyone on the importance to do that. I am a mom to a beautiful three-year-old. I live in Hyde Park. I was born in the Dominican Republic and Boston has been home to me and my family ever since. Roxbury was home to me and my family when we first came. We lived in Magnolia Street in a one-bedroom, and there's four of us. And I know that that's a lot of the story of a lot of us in this room, and I say that very proudly. Because in that one room, we shared meals, we shared struggles, but we shared the love of wanting to grow up in a city that was equitable and looked like all of us who are here and the people who immigrated here, like my parents did. From there, my mom was able to get a Section A voucher, and we moved to Saddle Huntington. We were able to get a two-bedroom this time. My mom was pregnant with my, my brother. Now there's three of us, two bedrooms. From there, my parents went through a whole bunch of housing, um, programs to be able to buy their first home. Bottom Line, NARCA, you name it. They did it all. They probably bought their first home in Mattapan on Moore and Wildwood. That's where I celebrated my quince. That's where my mom has her in-home childcare provider, small business owner. That's where my son goes every single day, and that's where I call home, because that's where I saw me growing up. I've been working for the city for over 10 years. I started working in City Council Madam Ali's office and understanding, as a young person, what it meant to work for the city that serves us. What it meant to work for a city that is truly supposed to work for all of us. But obviously, we're all here. We're seeing that that's not the case. I believe in growing up and serving in a city where I can make changes. Where I, as a woman of color, could step in and say that we have a say at the table. Where I can say we are opening doors for those who are left behind and also thanking those who opened them before us. From working in Council Madam Ali's office, I went, I went to Mass Bay Community College. And my English was not good enough. At some point, right, I wasn't able to pass the MCAS every single year when I was in high school. I say that very proudly because obviously today I am here, I am because of the great education of the parents that I was able to move forward to. Mass Bay helped me get the education I needed. And it wasn't a four-year education, but thanks to that, I was able to get to the mass transfer program to Pittsburgh State University. But thanks to programs like Bottom Line, Summer Search, Our Bound, I can say that all the city services help someone who looks like me to be in this space. Who maybe 10 years ago, 13 years ago, I wouldn't even have imagined what it would look like of me, Alex, sitting here with all of you and say that I'm running for Boston City Council. So when I saw all those young people coming here earlier, that reminded me of me, and it reminded me of my little brothers. It reminded me of all the kids that I grew up with that didn't even, we didn't even know that we had a chance. Because of the zip code that we lived in, or the circumstances that we lived in, or the education that we were getting. I am running for Boston City Council to give a voice, to be able to represent a city that truly needs representation. I was able to be appointed by Mayor Walsh as the Executive Director of the Office of Women's Advancement, where I did some amazing work on gender equity, trained over 10,000 women how to negotiate their salaries, but also focused on childcare providers specifically during the pandemic as our first workers, first-line workers. We saw childcare providers being open around the clock, 24 hours, to make sure that they were open for our first responders. I was proud to be able to fund every single childcare provider in the city of Boston in order for them to be able to maintain their doors open and to be able to pay their staff to be open. Worked on amazing programs on maternal health. As a mother, it's so important to focus on the impacts of postpartum depression has on black and brown women in our city. But no one talks about that. No one talks about the mental health perspective that it takes on a woman specifically in that focus. And I am very proud of that work that we did. I currently serve as the Executive Director of the Office of Culture Affairs. For the past two years, baby office, we have been able to fund over 70 nonprofit organizations to create nonprofit work and cultural work around the whole city. From our community focus on Latinx community, our Haitian community, our Caribbean community encompasses all the islands. For the first time, we just hired a Caribbean advisor to represent all the different islands in the city. And if that doesn't say something of how much our city needs to be moving forward, then we have some work to do. I say this very proudly. You have now the opportunity to give every single one, every single City Council a grade. Give them a grade and see where they are. You have options, people with experience, people who are ready to lead and make changes in this city. And focusing on that perspective and bringing someone into the City Council who's gonna get to work on day one is important. But someone who's gonna not be afraid to elevate that voice. Someone who's not gonna be afraid to say that we need to make sure that all these private institutions are paying their due diligence to refund those permits into our school systems. We have large institutions that are not paying their due diligence and are not paying the money that they owe the city. Where that money can be put into good work to making sure that every single child in the city of Boston has a universal PKC. Because right now, that's not the case. We have parents choosing between staying home or sending their kids to you, to universal PK. I'm currently in the waiting list myself. Hopefully by next year, maybe I'll be able to get a seat. Who knows? But that shouldn't be the case. Other cities are able to do that. Why hasn't Boston been able to do that? If we wanna talk about education, we need to talk about from this little ones. We need to invest in education from our little ones all the way to the youth that you saw here. That they were questioning why certain schools have better resources than others, and that should not be the case. Affordable housing, specifically focused on allowing people to purchase homes together. Like I mentioned earlier, I grew up in a multi-generational home. What it would look like if both of my parents and my grandmother and myself were able to put our incomes together and purchase our first home. Then we would have our whole family living in one roof. The same way that if we were back home. But unfortunately, that's not the case right now. We have one pilot that's going around, but a pilot is not gonna do it. We need full funding to be able to push forward good programs that are gonna serve and help our people. We cannot continue to do small pilots for programs that we know are gonna benefit our community to the greatest. And if we wanna continue to call Boston home, then let's put money to where our mouth is and to where our programs are working. Basic city services. We can talk all about policies. We can talk about how things are gonna work, but let's also talk about getting our pojos filled. Let's talk about making sure our sidewalks are safe for everyone who's walking. Let's talk about to make sure that we have safety crosswalks, so people are able to cross safely in our city. So on this primary election, I hope that today you have the opportunity to get to know me a little bit more and what I stand for. I urge you to take a look at every single person who's running and learn why they're fit for this job. But also, I'll take a look and focus on what does experience look like? What does someone who loves working for the city look like? What does a public servant look like? In order for you to do this job, you need to love the city. You need to love the people, and that's what I've been doing for the past 10 years. I humbly ask for your support, but I also ask you to challenge me, ask questions, push me. I am here to listen. I am here to take feedback, but I am here to serve you like I've been doing that for the last 10 years. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to answering questions.
Alright, so you obviously seem the best for last. Hey, thank you for this opportunity. I'm so happy to be here. Uh, my name is Marvin D. Mativiet. I am a candidate running for Boston City Council at large. So like my colleagues up here and even the incumbents that we see, I, I think what distinguishes me is that I have no affiliation whatsoever with City Hall. I'm not an appointee. I'm not an employee, whether past, present, or currently, right? Um, or an elected official, not yet. But I will tell you a little bit about me, what I stand for, and based off my experience, why I believe strongly my soft skills and my tangible skills and experience are good for City Hall, ultimately good for all of us within the city of Boston. So I'm a father of three. I have three little kids, an eight-year-old, a four-year-old, and a year-old, Nora, Beau, and Zoe. They keep me busy. But two of my kids, they also go to Boston Public Schools. They go to the Data Hill, which is not too far from here, right? So I understand, you know, the, the BTS system and what we all have to go through as well. Not only that, I'm also a son of Haitian immigrants. My parents came to this country back in the 1980s from New York. Do not hold that against me. And, and I found my way up here in Boston, right? So understanding, you know, the, the feeling of a lot of our immigrants are going through, uh, right now as you speak. I'm also serving the United States Marine Corps. I'm a Lieutenant Colonel in the Reserves of the United States Marine Corps. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So I, so I've been in, I've, I'm a combat veteran, been to Afghanistan. I was, um, argued it was the first once ago into this, uh, big town slash city called Marge, Afghanistan. And from there, even now, as a reservist, where I've been spending my time as a reservist, I've led from different echelons, from a platoon commander, um, all the way up to, uh, to an executive officer, where I was second commander of over 100-plus Marines. So I understand what's it like to lead, what's it like to command, what's it like to, to manage. But not only that, also looking at accountability and transparency. That's truly important, because at the end of the day, when I looked at my Marines, and not just my Marines, also on the business side and things of that nature, if I looked at my employees, my marine, my team, yeah, sure, they're gonna look at me for options, solutions, moving forward. But I know that they're, I'm also looking for their support. I'm also looking at what do they need from me. And if I don't do my part and hold that standard, they're gonna call me out on it. And as a City Council, and I think we all agree, is that that's what we expect from all of you. Just like how, um, Frank said as well, hey, we don't work for the mayor. We work for all of you. So if we're not hitting that mark, go ahead, call us out, because it is a feedback that we need to ensure that we are supporting our community. And that's some, and those are some of the things I learned in the Marine Corps. A little bit more about myself. I also own Ula Cafe, which is a big place. Ula Cafe's been around since 2007. Uh, my wife and I, we took it over back in 2021. I don't know if you know much about Ula Cafe, but it's one of those, oh, there you go. Alright, yeah, there you go. Ula Cafe, it is embedded in the DNA of the Jamaica McPlay Roxbury community. So it's, uh, so do you know where Vice Fitness is?
The brewery.
Yeah, the brewery. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Sonya, come on by. Come on by tomorrow. Get your scum. So, uh, so it's embedded in the community of, of, of our, of our neighborhood. But I will say this. I always joke around. My wife and I, you know, we're, we're not the owners. We're the custodians. Because we, because we try to change the U in Ula, try to tilt it a left, a right. Our neighborhood's gonna come after us. So we gotta be very careful. But that's important, right? Because again, we're getting that feedback. We have to understand what's important from, for our neighborhood and for our community. Some of the things that we've done at Ula Cafe, which is really crucial and important for community, we've done this thing called the Pay Forward Wall. So if you come into Ula and you purchase yourself a meal, and you're like, you know what? I have an extra $5. I know that there's someone out there who probably does not have the means to go ahead and purchase a coffee or sandwich, whatever the case may be. We'll go ahead and give a little card, and we say, okay, good. You want a sandwich here? Go ahead and post that on the wall. So for the next person who doesn't have the means or resources, they can say, hey, you know what? Let me pull this down. Can I please get that sandwich? That's how we're leveraging our community to give back to community. We've done a lot of great things such as, um, Ula After Dark, where we're getting our communities together. Now, more than ever, you're gonna hear me say this over and over again, to the point of you be like, well, hey, enough, Marvin. Community, underscoring that word, is important, because there's a lot of people right now that feel like they're alone or they're, you know, out and about and no one's hearing them, especially what's going on, you know, in DC and things of that nature. So we try to ensure that we bring people together at Ula Cafe after hours for them to be able to socialize, talk about things that they, that matters to them, and if it makes sense where we can actually mobilize and make some movement, let's do it. Let's do it together as a community. So not only do we serve great drinks, great food, great coffee, which of course I'm gonna say that because I'm the owner, I'm a little bit biased, but we're also ensuring that we're giving back to the community as much as we can. Now, another hat that I wear, I'm also the executive director of the first and only Haitian Culture Center in Boston, Massachusetts, New England area, and that's the Tucson-Luftert Culture Center. Now, uh, this, me as a son of Haitian immigrants, this is my love letter back to the Haitian community. I remember when I first came to Boston, close to ten years ago, I wanted to make sure that I was embedded within that community. And I remember I was talking to then, um, candidate Root C, Illusion, and I asked her, hey, what can I be able to do? And she said, you know what, reach out to the Haitian community. They had this concept of creating a Haitian Culture Center for over twenty years, and unfortunately, they just couldn't get the ground running. Now fortunately for me, because I have a master's in business administration, I was able to go ahead and roll up my sleeves and say, hey, okay, let's, let's start creating a business model, right? Let's start figuring exactly how can we go ahead and move forward. I am proud to say that after twenty years, we had our ground, our grand opening, excuse me, this past May, May twentieth, in the West End, right next to TD Garden, which is amazing. And not only that, not only that, we were able to get that space awarded from us by the city of Boston, rent-free, uh, for a twenty-five-year lease. And they also gave us fifty thousand dollars and undermined leadership. And of course, it was a lot of teamwork that was part of this. We were able to raise over three hundred thousand dollars, and we're still going strong. Again, this is because of the power of community. I say this, sure, I was leading this effort, but I could not have done this without the power of community. And that's something I wanna make sure that we're bringing into the city of Boston. In order for us to do that, we need to make sure that us up here, when we're in office, not if, right? We're able to go ahead and work with our colleagues in City Hall and ensure that the first thing that we have in mind, whether we disagree with each other or not, is that we need to focus on our community more than anything else, right? On top of that, you know, with, with, with me working international level as a marine officer, going to all these different countries, collaborating with people who may not agree with me, whether if I go to Colombia, Guyana, Guatemala, going to all these different countries, I've found a way to figure out how can we work on common ground? How can we work on figuring out what is our end state? And, and again, that is something that we need more than yearly. I'm saying all this because I don't have the experiences as these individuals have up here when it comes to working in City Hall. But one thing I could go ahead and show you all is what I brought to the table at the international level as a military diplomat, at the national level as a United States Marine officer, leading Marines from all different echelons, at the state level, which I haven't brought up yet, which is where I worked as the Deputy Chief Engagement Officer for Veterans Services Massachusetts. And in that role, serving our veterans, I've been able, along with my team, support all veterans within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, ensure that they're getting the support that they need. Now I'll say this, because I know I've got two minutes. What was great about that position is that I had the opportunity to dual-hat. Not only was I commanding Marines, training them, and getting them to go downrange, but once they came back, specifically in Massachusetts, I ensured they got the support that they needed in, in Massachusetts. And I wanna assure that we continue to do that as well. So I've worked at the federal level, the state level, the community level, and based off my experiences of management, transparency, leadership, collaboration, I know that I am the person that's a fresh, independent voice, that's not connected whatsoever, that can help move this city council forward in return, making sure that we are providing to our community. So I say all this here, please, 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 keep me accountable, because this is a team effort. Sure, my name is on the ballot at the end of the day, but I've worked for all of you. So I expect you, good sir, to call me out and be like, hey Marvin, you are not holding up to, to where you need to be. I expect from you, Matt, to be like, hey Marvin, great, but that's not what we expect from you. So I could go ahead and readjust and make sure I'm moving forward. Please vote for me, September nineteenth is right around the corner, and I appreciate being here. Thank you so much.
How'd y'all think you did, y'all? What'd you think? Did you learn something that you didn't know about each of these candidates? Everyone learn something new? Alright, so we're gonna do a quick ten-minute run lightning round between them, and then open it up for twenty minutes of discussion from everybody else. So, um, let's start with Will first. Can you please just, just announce, if you have a question for it, if you have a relative candidate to answer, yes or no, or anyone who wanna do it? Any, what candidate, what question do you have here, candidate?
For all of them.
Just all, one question?
One question.
Okay, Laura, one question.
Could you all raise your right hand? No, sir. Yeah, we're doing this, because it's on camera. Do you solemnly swear to defend the city of Boston against foreign and domestic enemies? Do you solemnly swear to defend the city of Boston even if it is not in your personal best interest? Do you swear to stand up against any elected official if they make the wrong decision or if they're doing something regardless of what they say, the position they hold, but because your conscience tells you it's the right thing to do? Do you swear before all these people, if you're elected to the office of city council, to be that type of counselor?
I do.
Yes.
Alright. Your turn, give it up, that was good.
Yeah, I actually sued the city council and the mayor in federal court because what they were doing was wrong. Yes, I do. Couple of the Constitution. What, what, one thing can you say that you guys will bring to the city council that isn't there now? What specifically can you bring that is not there now?
Great question, great question, great question.
Start with me?
Yeah, and how much do you bench press?
I'd be pushing the four hundred club.
Oh, that's it?
There's a gym out there.
Hey, give me that pull-ups.
Next debate needs to be on a gym.
That's true. One thing that I can bring to the city council are, first of all, professionalism, ladies and gentlemen. Our city council lacks professionalism, and so much, and, and so much so that it is crippling the things and the decisions that they should be making that should be serving our lives and serving the people of Boston. But the biggest thing I think I could bring to the city of council is my expertise in housing. I have been the Housing Commissioner, as I said, for ten years in two different capacities for the city of Boston. Housing is the biggest thing right now that is facing our cities, the biggest crisis. No one can afford to live in the city of Boston. And at the rate we're going, ten years from now, I promise you, none of us will be here.
Great answer, brother, great answer.
So I certainly can bring housing experience. I know what it takes to fix it, I know what it takes for stability, I know the policies. I have the ideas of what we gotta do to get this shit moving immediately.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I think I, I've already, uh, discussed that, but I'll go ahead and reiterate it. I think with me, with my different backgrounds that I have as well, to work at the national level, international level, state as well as community, being there here as a community, knowing how to go ahead and best mobilize them, right? And knowing that all communities are different, right? We don't just live in Boston and everyone, you know, plays in the same realm, right? We have to make sure that we're reaching out to different neighborhoods, understanding their needs and wants, and, and, and making sure that we're being the voice for them and City Hall. I think that's crucial, that's important. But again, with my skills of being able to collaborate, being able to negotiate, finding common ground, which again, I feel like that's something that we are hurting right now. You said it as well too, sir, that when you were at, when you're in city council, people, people would want to sit down, meet with you, have lunch. That's not happening anymore, and that's a huge issue. And when I was in different countries, or if I was working with a fellow military officer or someone that I was trying to make a business deal with, then I know I didn't see eye to eye for one reason or another, one thing they would do is get coffee or sit down and have a conversation about that, right? And at the end of the day, we may not always agree on things, but we have to be mission first. And that's what I am, as a marine, as a businessman, as a community leader, I am mission first. And my mission is to serve the community. So those are things I wanna bring to City Hall.
Thank you.
Great question. Where do I start? One of the things that I can definitely say that I can bring to the city council that right now, we, we don't see it because of the lack of professionalism like Ole Miss did, is the passion to be able to serve all of you. If you love this work so much and you love these positions so much, then we should be able to work with one another in a way that we're actually getting work done. Bring in focusing on collaboration, but also focusing on actual understanding how to run city government. That's something that we need. When you look at all of us up here, you need to understand that you need to elect someone who understands that at the time that they're sitting down discussing the budgets, they know how each budget is prepared in each city department. Because we do, we do not need people to learn how to make and create budgets in the city council when it's time and we are discussing funding that should be put into the right places for our community. And that is something that I can bring to you, is that expertise in focusing and understanding how city services work and how budget works in each city department. As someone who currently does that and who has done that. Thank you.
Excellent question. Your turn, you're up.
My turn, great, I should've stayed up. Oh my God, alright, right, you're coming to that. Let's see.
You can pass.
If you have to look at policies and programs that other cities have been working on, what is one thing that you think the city of Boston could be doing better that we should be looking to other cities for?
Person you wanna start?
Mark?
Yeah, absolutely. So one thing I wanna take a look at, um, is, is obviously looking at housing. I think housing is the biggest issue. Now look, I don't have the silver bullet when it comes to housing, if I did, then, you know. So, so, so I'm working with you. At the end of the day, I do wanna look at different cities, you know, we do, and, and looking at how do we best revise our zoning, which is archaic and very cumbersome as well. Now, we got places in, in, um, in Texas, we got places in, in the mid, in, um, the Midwest. We got even Cambridge, those need to go ahead and revise some of their policies when it comes to, to housing. I think Cambridge, from what I gather, keep me honest here, since you're the housing guy, is that, um, you know, as, as a right, you're able to go ahead and start building once it hits five or six floors or whatnot, right? How do we go ahead, and knowing that our city's different, we have, you know, different mechanisms around that, but how do we pull some of those elements for us to be able to go ahead and continue to build, right? As a right, so we don't have to go ahead and do this cumbersome, archaic, um, zoning code that we have. So those are the things that I would like to pull from different cities to see here in Boston. And of course, making sure that we have the voices of everyone here, not just here, but, you know, throughout the city of Boston, Boston's voice when it comes to housing, because I think that there are a lot of people that feel that their voices are not being heard, especially when it comes to neighborhoods. So I wanna make sure that we're actually in that space. You can clap, it's okay.
Frank?
Um, I, I think respectfully that in Boston, we are Boston, we should lead. I don't think we need to look for other cities the way they do it. I would point specifically at the Mass and Cass tragedy, which was, which was man-made. The tents all showed up there over a weekend, I was there for it. I was there for the closing of Long Island, I was there when the tents showed up right across from, right in front of the, um, of the fire headquarters. We went down, we went down a housing-first policy, which basically, at that time, and that was COVID, don't, don't forget, we had upwards of six hundred units that were, that were for people that lived here, workforce housing that the Walsh administration had built, and we were, we were waiting to put people in there. And we gave all that housing rooms and, and apartments out to people that were basically unable to make decisions for themselves based on a policy that was called a housing-first policy. I have, I would flop that on its head, it would be treatment first, because when you take someone off the street, you need to bring them in and shelter them and, and protect them. So that, I would argue, is housing that way. And then when they, there's a proven track record, the carrot and the stick, there's a proven track, track, track record, then maybe you get a room or you, or you get an apartment or something. I spent my entire career trying to find people, apartments that are Boston people that could not get into apartments, when we're giving people that are running around naked down a mass and cast. We're putting them in, 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 in units, and quite frankly, I, I thought, I thought it was appalling. So that is something I think, and my voice will be there on that with different solutions there. I think, well, I won't get into the whole thing, but that's one thing that I would like to change, that I would, that I would think differently of. And I think the whole country has it wrong, so.
Good job, bring it on home, brother.
Bring it on home.
Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be tough. Alright, so, all you working in City Hall, wondering.
Wait, you answered, didn't you?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you were first, then it was me.
Oh, Phil had an answer.
Thank you, rising.
Policy-wise. You know, you guys know what I like. I agree with Frank when it comes to policy, because, uh, with other cities, because let our mind everywhere in this room, that Massachusetts first America. So any problem happening in America needs to start here, that's one. Two, it is because we were following other cities and so forth that we got into this mess in the first place. Because Boston is not New York, it's not DC, it's not LA, it's not San Francisco. We don't have their infrastructure. That's how we got into this mess with bike lanes, that's how we, where traffic gets out of control. That's how we got into this mess with Mass and Cass, how we got into so many different kinds of things that are plaguing us that we're all fighting to fix right now. But the one thing I would say that one state is doing, not that I wanna copy them, Boston had a, a mission to do what is called, build seventy thousand units of housing by twenty thirty. We've only done about maybe four or five thousand, not, not even one percent, not even one percent. Texas, Houston was able to figure out how to do seventy thousand units in two years, in two years, seventy thousand. So that's the only one thing that I would take a peek at, because again, we're Boston, we do things differently. But if something's working somewhere else, um, it doesn't mean we can't do it. But that's the one thing, I would love to know how they did what they did, because you see, we, we need what is called an abundance package. An abundance package that's gonna allow us to build massively quickly, but for the workforce. You understand what I'm saying? Because the situation is so dire, like, again, ten years from now, if we don't start this like yesterday, none of us is gonna be here. It's over. Is that simple? So that's what I.
I think, one second, I think it's not, it's not copying, right, or going because Boston does it better and everything. It's also, we sit here and we have conversations of how we can be better collectively, how do we also work collectively and also listening, right? Because it's also a conversation of, while we are continuing to lead and we are doing an amazing job of what that looks like, but what does it also look like for us to listen and be able to implement and move the things forward that I'm not currently working forward? So it's not copying what other cities are doing, but better yet, how do we open conversations to be able to have dialogues and have those connections of one another, to be able to share resources and also just connect and share information? Just wanted to clarify that.
Can I go now? We lost our.
Yeah, you can go.
I'm the leader. Alright, so, uh, alright, so here's my question. For all you three, you know, working in City Hall in different capacity here, what is one thing that, one policy, one issue, one initiative that you're not proud of, that you worked on, uh, didn't go your way, and as city council, you would love to go ahead and fix your address? Do I also call who goes?
Yeah, sure. There's, there's multiple, actually. We could, we could get into Mass and Cass that didn't go my way. But if I were to go to one that's a little more benign, I think the way that we went about, um, limiting, limiting Airbnb was wrong, because Airbnb, so like if people are traveling to Massachusetts, they're coming and they're going to Boston, it costs you eight hundred dollars to stay in a downtown hotel room. And the reality is, in my neighborhood in Dorchester, we're not even on maps still. You know what I'm saying? If you look at a map of the city, Dorchester is not there. Airbnb actually brought people to sit in the barrooms and the restaurants that are on Dorchester Avenue, Fields Corner, and things like that. But the problem is, we had a lot of bad actors, similar to, similar to the Sova homes, similar to when you have a bad actor, uh, an absentee landlord is a bad actor. So instead of going in there and trying to manage the good, the good opportunities, because there was a whole underground business plan there with, with, people were cleaning, people were, people, you know, had, for lack of a better term, an underground business. And we just went in there and took our meat cleaver to the whole thing and just, and just said, the only people we can do it. the only people we can do it are the people that have an extra unit. So, I, I think that that was one, one, um, battle that I had that I lost. I was all gone on the whole, on the whole thing. I think there are opportunities because the reality is, you know, people want to come to Boston, just like we're, we're suffering with housing costs. You can't come here, you can't go to a Red Sox game, you can't go, you can't go anyplace, especially if it starts with a, uh, an $800 hotel room. It's not going to happen. So, we here are losing out on tourist dollars coming into these neighborhoods. So, that's one thing that's, that's not a hot button issue. It's not housing, it's not mass and cast. That's something that, and again, I advocated for, to the, to the chagrin of the, the hotel workers saying, you know, why should we lose out on, 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 on our.
Ten seconds, Frank, ten seconds.
Oh, sorry, I don't think, I don't think that, I think it's two separate things. So, we, we killed an entire economy here and, yeah, so that's that.
That's what you want to work with?
I see.
Thirty seconds, everyone else, I'm sorry, we gotta get to the person.
Yeah, we lost our leadership, I don't know.
Everyone else, shut up real quick, please.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I'll be super quick. I, I think the one thing that I, um, one battle I lost is with my brother's keeper. It was supposed to be funded, um, by the Obama Foundation, so they basically got the business of funding it. So, we were responsible for getting the city of Boston to do that. That's what that money was supposed to go towards, to help the black and brown boys ages six to 21 and give them all kinds of different opportunities. And in the process of fighting for it and fighting for the funding for it, um, certain names I'll leave, um, that remain anonymous, got angry and did not want to continue to fund it. So, they bounced it around and it then went to the Boston Public School Department, who was supposed to fund it, they killed it. And so then it got swallowed up into what is now called, um, Office of Blackmail Advancement. And, um, it failed our young men. And it was a battle I fought, but it was a battle that I, 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 I lost because it needed money. And I fought for the money, but, um, I ended up getting into a, a struggle with certain powers that be that got nasty. And because of that, they, they, um, they didn't fund it anymore because we were fighting hard. So, that's the one thing in my, in my career that, um, um, that I still hurts me to this day.
The last one person, please. Here we go.
Yeah, I agree with you. Um, I don't think it's something that I lost, but I was just very, very disappointed. Um, I've been leading this office for less than two years, something like that, yeah. Um, when we proposed our budget to be in front of the city council, um, again, I did a lot of work with arts and culture for the city, specifically with our cultural, um, background, I'm one like a lot of communities like Latinx, Haitian, Caribbean, et cetera. So, I get to work with a whole bunch of nonprofits, I do a lot of cultural work. Um, we developed a, um, a grant program that you apply, just, and one of the things that really disappointed me is that when it went in front of the city council, um, we didn't get a lot of advocates when it comes to fully funding and getting more money to be able to grant more organizations. So, when we talk about how do we really take a look at funding into the city and funding nonprofit organizations, that we get calls and every day, I went from being able to find everyone who applied last year to that grant program to this year, we were only able to fund over 20 to 25 organizations. And that's because of the lack of advocacy on the city council side of being able to have more money in my budget to be able to fund organizations like yours. And I've made you a lot of, who are here that have also applied for some type of grant on arts and culture throughout the city. Definitely looking forward for something for me to be able to fight on the city council as someone that, no one talks about arts and culture as much. No one talks about the importance of what it's, what funding looks like, I think a lot of these programs to move forward and the money that it takes to put on all these amazing events that we see in our community happen every single weekend. So, making sure that we have more funding for those things is something that I was very disappointed, don't you think, of?
Good job, everybody. How about you give us a question for you guys? First of all, like our seniors, anyone 65 plus or senior acting? All right, or senior art? To please.
And I used to be senior outreach for Frank. And as Frank said, the most heartbreaking part of my job was telling people who were leaving their homes that they, that there was nothing they could do. Eight-year-old aid was, is there a way that the city could give preference to Boston residents?
Is that directed at me?
That's directed at everybody.
I want to understand the nature of the question. Is there a way the city can give preference to Boston residents who are applying?
For housing?
For housing?
For housing, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. A- absolutely. Um, how that goes.
I see lots of yeses in there. I see none. I see a couple of head nods here, a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just trying to really understand the, the nature of the question, but if it's, when it comes to giving preference, housing, yeah, the city can easily do that because the city controls the list.
Yeah.
That does that. The city controls who does what and all that kind of stuff. So, the city can easily, and city councils actually can jump the list based on emergency and need. So, yeah, absolutely.
Brilliant, thank you.
So, can I, uh, within Dart Block, which was, um, 400 units on Dorchester Ave, one of the things that, that we did in, in my office was to, because there is problems with the, with the lottery. The lotteries are so oversubscribed and, you know, if it's Boston, Boston people, yeah, you want Boston people, but you can't say fair housing, you can't say if you're from Rockton or someplace else, you can't go on there. So, it's a, it's a line sort of thing. But one of the things we did, because, because Dorchester is diverse and where we lived was diverse, we were able to provide a, within a one-mile radius of that building, that those people that were on the list got a, got a priority. So, it's, it's almost building-specific, but there is legislation that I'm, that I'm curious at how it's going to play out. Because I think, I think there's opportunities as, as city people for, for us to start with city workers and build, build things that, that we could give priority to the, the public works and to the school teachers and things like that. There's legislation working on that now and it's to help smaller towns give priority to the people that are living in those towns. I'm, I'm curious to see how that legislation plays out, but I think that's very much based on building by building. And also, another thing that I learned was, if you stay away from the city money altogether and you use state money, then people can, can take local people because I, I, I was involved in a, in a, in my time off in the city council. I was involved in a, in a, um.
You said people would take local people? I'm sorry.
Yeah, local, like, so, so, if the city isn't involved and you don't take any city money and you use mass HIC money or mass housing money because it's a state thing, then the developer is able to control the, the list and be able to take, and again, but it's still a list and, and it's a priority, then you can take local people without getting into the, the, the city has made it nearly impossible to put local people into local buildings. So, when we see these big buildings going up and we want our seniors that grew up in Roxbury, Dorchester, South Boston, they're not a priority. Anybody can come get on them. And I think that's wrong. I think we're losing our communities through, when our seniors, they're all staying in their homes because they know they're not going to get on, on a housing list again. There are ways to do it, but it's work.
I've been watching this woman right here, body language right here. She's been like this and she's been like this and she's like this. So, you know, you always look for the body language. Like, do you have something, do you want to just share a little bit of stuff real quick? Please do.
We've actually gone before the ZDA of many cases and specifically for Garrison trial area. We've asked for housing to be kind to our existing residents because we are losing, uh, our residents are leaving to go to Rockton, everywhere else except for, they can't afford to be here. And we specifically said, is there possibility of having a community, um, based preference? Even if it's 10% of the housing. And we've been told no, because it's a, because the funding sources, and you mentioned it, the funding sources restrict, uh, uh, who can get, um, access to those lists. And, and, and I don't know if there's other ways of doing it, but we specifically asked and our residents have been, you know, we've been told, no, our residents do not have any preference that can be offered.
Well, I, I was part of a, a, a local preference and I think it was, and it was for the lower-income, uh, units. I think there's everywhere from 40% to, to 80 and 100%. And, and we in Dart, Dart Block, which is on Dorchester Ave at Freeport Street here, we got a local preference. How did that play out? I don't know. I left the city council and wasn't really watching the, the roles of who could in there. But we were able to get a local preference there. So, with enough due diligence and work, and again, I was involved in a, in a project that, that didn't involve the city, because I think the city makes things too cumbersome. You know, and, and so I just, I think there's work to be done there.
Thirty seconds, both candidates, um, other candidates, real, thirty seconds, please, go for it.
I just wanted to, to address that same, I think the conversation that we're not just thinking, mentioning here too, is that these conversations start at the moment that that Article 80 is processed at the, at the VPDA. There is, there's one such thing as called community engagement and that presence and also including those voices in there. Every single development has to go to the VPDA, has to go to this internal meeting, sitting at city hall, right? So, as, as someone who works in those spaces, those conversations happen. But what does that look like? If we start that conversation, those city preference for city workers, for city people at that table, then we can start even implementing having those conversations because it all starts at the, at the beginning of.
Will, thirty seconds, Will, thirty, okay, thirty seconds.
I'm just going to tell you straight, the city lied to you. And they've been doing that. I sued the city of Boston for HUD before for this kind of thing. Boston has what is called a consent decree. So, what you're talking about, it's a federal consent decree that happened from 1982 and I believe DynoWorks and the NAACP sued the city of Boston for not desegregating the city of Boston. That consent decree does not get followed. So, the people that control on the particular housing department know this. You understand? Know this. And they know that you can absolutely do that. You understand? It's through what is called, uh, the IDP program. And if anyone here has ever read it and understood it, you'll know that what you're asking for, man, yes, is very possible, but you have people in there that specifically do this.
For the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, and we used to, and I was the, um, subcommittee co-chair for the housing development. Now, one of the biggest things that I see is that a lot of people are going to look like that, right? They all, you know, they all had blow-off, white, you know, middle-aged or retired, or the case may be, but there were a lot of people that were there, that were not there, that was, that was in Jamaica Plain, their voices weren't being heard. So, as I'm for Article 80 ensuring that we're getting more community engagement, let's make sure that we get everybody or at least as many people into this, we can be able to continue these conversations. Whether if it's looking at permanent hybrid, um, you know, meeting program or looking at different languages or looking at different hours, um, hours, so we can make sure that all voices are heard and represented. I think that's truly important.
I have a question right here in the back. Hold on, Steve, and then yourself, go for it. Oh, Billy?
Good evening. Uh, I haven't heard too much, um, tonight at all on safety and security. I'm just asking a real blunt question. Do you all believe the city of Boston is a safe city?
Who goes first?
Everyone wants to go. And after you answer the question, I'll go to your opposite side.
The simple answer is no. All right? Boston touts itself as being the safest city in America only because we've been able to bring homicides down because of what our first responders do. The first responders, meaning the EMS is able to get to any hospital within two to five minutes. That is what has saved life. However, when it comes to the gunplay that's going on in our neighborhoods and you look at those stats and you actually talk to the Boston police, you would find out that these are, what they're telling you is fictitious numbers. They've been doctored for political reasons. You understand what I'm saying to you? So, the answer to that question is no, absolutely not.
Anybody else want to share, jump in, please?
Yeah, depending on, depending on the neighborhood you live in, you might feel a little bit safe, right? And, and that's, that's, that's the problem when it comes down to it. If you look at my palm card, it says, and our city, and our streets aren't safe. Because they're not, right? Um, just like as, as Will said, you know, you know, yeah, true, the data shows a little bit better, but that's not the case for a lot of our different neighbors and, and, and people that live in. And we're seeing it. Now, we're in the, the 100 days of summer and things of that nature that we have to be mindful of. We see, we see the criminal, we see the activities that's occurring, right?
It seemed like it's not, it's not very safe. I mean, the, the bike messages are totally out of control. And that's just, that's just one thing. And it's, and it's not adding to our quality of life in every neighborhood. And that's not talking about violence and, and different things like that. So, I would just say it's a, it's kind of a misrepresentation.
Quick, quick matrix to let everyone know, this is what they're running on. So, great answers for everybody, especially you, Will, for starting it off. And everybody take it back from that. We are definitely down, we're, we're definitely down on homicides and shootings, but every other major violent crime, we are up.
15% with shot.
Over 20%, okay? Shots, fighters, uh, firearms, assault and battery, dangerous weapon, uh, the possession of just basic knives. So, it's a real misnomer and we have to get back to having a safer city. So, thank you for your answers.
I need to do right now a quick fire round of questions. I know we have limited time, but I just want you to be able to say your question and just want you to hear a couple of them. So, please go and say your question. We're going to go hear four questions at the same time. Go for it.
Okay. Um, everyone knows that housing is an issue, but I'm coming with the real issue right now for someone. I don't want to mention their name, but they're driving Uber and they're missing $1,800 and they need money now. They need help now. What can you as a city councillor do that can interact at that desperate level? Because they're forced into a, a two-bedroom with $2,800. It's impossible for some people that are not being paid properly. And I am charged for trying to help them. That's what your landlord does, but I need help and I need you guys there to help us immediately with something that intervenes with someone that could go homeless. So, what can you do? What would you propose that would not involve a lot of red tape, a lot of going to this one, baha, that one, baha? I need some actual, um, help for the person now. What could you do as city councilor?
Hold on one second, please. Can I hear your question and your question, please? I mean, real quick, go for it.
I'm losing my voice, sorry. So, my, my question is specific to Alexandra about this. Oh my god, I'm losing my voice. Let me take a minute.
One more second.
All right, well, my, my, uh, question, I feel like, uh, helps level the playing field. So, the voters of Boston voted for participatory budgeting, not just for $1 million, but literally for the whole budget. As a city councillor, you would have participatory budgeting for the whole budget too. Right now, the city is talking about putting 800-plus wet beds at Shatt Hospital, but they closed Carney Hospital. They're talking about $100 million to White Stadium, but there's not enough money for schools. The mayor recently told US Congress she didn't know what happened to $5 billion we got in the Recovery Act. So, as a city councillor, what would you do to make sure that the mayor or the administration was more accountable to every penny that was spent in Boston?
One more question right here, please. Right here, go for it.
Yes, um, Boston is a major contributor to the reparations blueprint, um, and also leading the conversation. We've received, uh, an apology. We have a task force. We have a commission. We have a documentary that just came out. I'd like to know from whomever is answering, where do you stand on reparations? Do you support it or do you not?
And last question right here, go for it.
Yeah, I have a question around safety and security. So, I have a 13-year-old son and him and his friends, you know, they're at the age where they can't get a job because they're not 14, but they're out in the streets, they're taking public transportation. So, as a mother, I'm really worried. I'm calling him, looking at his location all the time. So, as a city councillor, I would like to know, how would you engage the kids who can't quite get jobs yet and, you know, they're too old for camp and they really have nothing to do? The, um, community centers close early, they don't get wide memberships, like, how do you engage them? I know the work that I do in my community, um, where I used to live in South Boston, I engage the, the, um, children who are not seen really, where that are overlooked, the ones who are getting into trouble. And I will say councillor Baker actually helped me start, um, my community's a barbecue basketball event. I've been doing for maybe for like five years now. Councillor Baker definitely helped me do that. So, the fifth annual, and the kids come in, and I won't say councillor Baker helped me without even thinking about it. He said anything for, like, anything. So, thank you councillor Baker for that. Appreciate your continued support. So, how can you guys as city councillors help the children who are 13, who can't quite work and have all these things that is not falling in place with the jobs, the community centers, the YMCA and everything that's happening on the streets with the guns in the house?
Guess what, y'all? We can have this conversation, but the workers got to go home. So, we're going to go right over here, all right, for y'all to answer some of those questions as I clean up in here and all that. Give it up for our good friend, Boy Slaman. He's got to go home. So, please, continue out this door, out this door over there and go right over there and let's have this conversation.
Breakdown, because what happened was that money was given from the federal government to rebuild, to build that, um, the Build Back Better Plan that Joe Biden and Kamala Harris had put together. That's what that money was for, to actually help with housing, to help with job training, to help with creation of jobs, to help with infrastructure, all these things. That was part of that bill. And that money was taken and used the way it was used and was not used on any of the Boston residents. And no one is talking about that because. because it's a hot-button federal issue to talk about illegal migrants. And I understand, I'm not knocking, just telling you the truth of what exactly happened. I would have had a herring on it, and I would have demanded that we don't pass the budget till we know what happened to five billion dollars. Your question, sir. We need to reinvest and, and have a fund. The city is, I mean, come on, this is taxpayer money. Have a fund, so when people are down and out or are falling hard times, they can apply to this fund, and it can help them in those situations. Without the red tape, the, the, the Office of, um, Housing Stability touts this, but they don't have the money, they don't do this. Not at all. This is, this is a smoke show, and I know this because I'm in housing. I was a commissioner, or one of the commissioners. So what happens is, we need that, and we also need it for emergencies. So when families fall on hard times, whether your house gets burnt down or something like that, we're able to house you. We're actually supposed to reserve units for that kind of thing. We're supposed to have a pocket of funding to help people that are in those kinds of situations. But no one is talking about, thinking in that direction. So those are the things I would do. I would make sure the council demands, as we talked about, the, um, the, the fund that the city, what do they say? The one percent participatory budget fund would have millions upon millions of dollars in it for these reasons. And I would also ask that we have certain housing that's reserved for emergencies. So when families fall on hard times, we can help them. It gives you at least a good two, three months to get on your feet.
Six months, hell.
Whatever. Put it together and help people. Because that, that's what we're supposed to be doing. That's the kind of out-of-the-box thinking that I would love to bring to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a barrage of questions you guys wanna answer?
Yeah, so, so, uh, talk about the internship program. You know, um, I, my mother-in-law, she, she adopted four kids. And we had a thirteen-year-old that was living with us from New, from New, um, from Connecticut. And she had a very hard time living with us due to the fact that idle hands is a double playground, right? She wasn't able to go ahead and figure out things that she wanted to do, or there were no resources or things of, of that nature that she's able to do. Because we didn't have that system that was involved in place, right? So unfortunately, she got into trouble, and she was sent back down to Connecticut. And I feel like at the end of the day, that's us within the Boston community failing an individual like this. Now, some of the things I'll take, I'll take a look at as well, and, and, you know, again, piggybacking off of Will. Um, I, you know, we do have Spark Program. We do have these internship programs for our youths. As a small business owner, as an executive director of a Haitian Culture Center, I do have youths that are working or that are participating in our programs. You know, why not try to see if we could do this, not just a whole summer long, but even extending into the fall or to year-round as well too? Ensuring that, yes, they're focusing on school, they're focusing on assignments and whatnot. But this is a great experience where they're able to go ahead and, A, you know, um, beef up their resume at the age of thirteen, fourteen years old, right? Being able to start their working dynamics. You know how many students and how many people I've talked with that's thirteen or fourteen years old? They can't look me in the eyes because they just don't have that working dynamic, right? Being able to take them young and be able to say, hey, what do you want to do? Or, hey, I need you to be able to do this. When I'm talking with you, let's talk to each other and have a full conversation. Getting them out of trouble. I think that those are the things that we need to go ahead and build upon for our stu-, for our students and for our children, to keep them out of this idle hands and, and, you know, being in double playground. So those are the things I would like to push and keep, continue to work forward as well. I think looking at, um, you, sir, did you leave already? Uh, the individual that had the friend that's an Uber driver. I don't know if he left. Uh, bottom out of front, my father's an Uber driver. Uh, he's in New York, he's an Uber driver. And, you know, it's tough on my mom and dad because it's really tough on me and to me. Um, and I'm always trying to figure out ways I could be able to support them. So hearing that, that hurts me, right? Because that's something I'm focusing on, on, you know, almost a daily basis, on how to go ahead and support my family. Some of the things I wanna do, um, is work with unions that are working with, you know, Uber, Uber drivers, or sure that they're being taken care of. But not only that, the pilot program, we got the K-Lu tax program. We have all these tax-exempt institutions that's within the greater Boston area, that's in Boston, where they're taking up space, they're taking up more space. Meanwhile, our residents are getting pushed out. And we're asking them to go ahead and optionally give money, you know, to, uh, to contribute, right? I don't know if you know this, but they give about full transparency, about thirty, forty percent of what they're being asked.
They don't even-
Yes. Yeah, on, on average, it's about thirty-four percent.
The pilot program?
Yeah. Okay, I was, I was showing those thirty, forty percent. But thank you for correcting me if it's just point blank, zero. If that's, if that's the case, then that is totally wrong, and that screwed up. And what do we do at the city council? I say that that's the lowest hanging fruit that the city council can go ahead and focus on, right? So a couple of things that we need to focus on in pilot program. If it is just points, if it is zero, which is like, holy crap, that's messed up if we're letting this program go. First thing we need to do, we need to go ahead and do an assessment on those institutions, right? The last, I don't know if you know this, but, you know, for, we, we based whatever they have on their property. And the last time we did a full assessment was over a decade ago. I think a couple of years ago, we did an assessment, but we haven't gotten the results. What's going on with that? Okay, so we need to do an assessment on that, and we need to keep their feet to the fire by utilizing their institutional master plan and ensuring, hey, if you're gonna have your IMP program, which is focused on community benefit, ensure that we have on there that they're going to submit or contribute up to X percent or whatever we're asking them. And I think that's gonna be beneficial for our residents here in Boston. So those are the things I wanna get on. That is alarming, thank you so much. I, I thought it was thirty, forty percent, but zero percent, yes. Jesus, that's, so we need to, we need to do more as a city council. Thank you so much for that.
I am, I want to add on to what everyone has said, because everyone has said some great things already. But I think the one thing that I'll, I'll just mention is also looking into, and specifically this is to the youth who are thirteen and fourteen. I have cousins who are, we, we hear, my, I hear my aunt and uncles going crazy because they're in South Bay, right? They're, they're there on the weekends. They're there every day after school. And God forbid something happens and we, we, we get a call that we don't wanna hear. Um, but focusing into that, we have a lot of institutions that are working, but in the sense, how are we also making sure that we're creating more programs so our kids are not able, not having to pay to get into these organizations or something? Why don't we offer free memberships to a lot of these community centers who are there open and they're open later? Our kids shouldn't be paying for that. We should have the opportunity to be able to do those things and to really focusing how we're supporting the youth. And if we wanna talk about really focusing and engaging the youth, that's where we start. That's where we start. I used to do a lot of community service in B C Y F Center in Rosendale, specifically with the youth and working, um, on resume building and just, um, teaching them the importance of dressing up. Um, and one of the things that they would say to, they would, they would say, it's seven, eight o'clock, what am I gonna do? They ended up staying outside. They ended up staying outside. Because the B C Y F centers were their safe haven, they were their home. A lot of these kids, this is this place that they feel safe. So what does it look like for us to really think about investing and expanding hours? And I always, I always say this when I get to talk about a lot of issues is, we forget about non-traditional hours. We forget about that. We forget about that not everyone has a traditional nine-to-five, that not everyone has a traditional hourly. Like, we have people who are working two and three jobs, and their kids are sometimes by themselves, are at the house. And not because, because the parents are, don't even have the ability to make ends meet. I mean, my mom used to work through, my mom used to work every single weekend. I remember, we, we used to have lunch with my mom in our minivan when she was a home health aide, because she only had an hour to spend time with us on Saturdays. And she decided to open her daycare because she, she no longer wanted us to come home and she wasn't home.